Okay, I'd like to make a motion or entertain a motion to reconvene.
Oh.
Yeah.
Ring's not back.
Sorry. Mr. Wenderkowitz, second by Ms. Conoco. Okay, agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under the new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you're asked to limit your questions no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you're here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes, and I'll ask that you please specify the resolution that you're referring to before you pose your question. Yes? Superintendent's report.
Is this on? We're good? Yep. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to just make special note to an email that was sent out earlier this week in regard to our parent academy. Dr. D' Toro has really put in a great deal of effort to get a lot of people and wonderful opportunities together, and once again, the Mawa Municipal Alliance is partnering with us on this. If you haven't checked out that email or don't know where it is, it is located, the parent academy information on our website. We do have our first workshop, or rather, second for the year. We had one in October. Math is not just a spectator sport for secondary parents, but everything is clearly listed on our website and the opportunities available and the ability to sign up using a Google form so that we know what's going on as far as enrollment is concerned. So, kudos to Dr. D' Toro and for really making this happen this year, so I wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Just say, update on the STEAM edition. We do have a note on here. At the note at the last meeting, I had said that. For tonight's meeting, we're going to have Mr. Romero speak. We did have to push that to our next meeting, so we are now scheduled to have that presentation, formal presentation for Mr. Romero for our November 14th meeting. But as far as an update on the last couple of events at the site since our last meeting, the interior slab has been completed and poured. Twelve truckloads of concrete did enter the facility to pour the concrete slab in one pour. Exterior walls have been finished. Interior wall should be beginning very soon, and we are expecting two deliveries in the next couple of months, one of some of the steel for the roof portion of the building, as well as some of the brick for the veneer are the next two big milestones as far as deliveries that we're expecting. Thank you very much. That's all I have for this evening.
Mr. Fair. And Kim left the president's report that I'll give here. Bergen County Middle School Chorus. Congratulations to the Ramapo Ridge Middle School eighth graders who were accepted into the Bergen County Middle School Chorus. I have Alex Alice Feng, that's soprano, Melanie Gilbert Alto, and Caroline Chung, also Alto. This year was particularly special as it was the third time that the Ridge hosted the auditions for the county. For the Bergen County Chorus, we're happy to share the news that 10 Mawa High School students were accepted into the Bergen County Chorus last night, and five of them scored at or near the top of their sections. Lydia Sharon had a top score for soprano two, top score soprano two, and Samantha DeVries came in second in the soprano one section. Soprano auditions are very competitive, and these are huge accomplishments. Aiden Mossman and Rebecca Solomon both came in third in their sections, and Aaron Lockwood came in fifth. Also accepted to the choir were Tommy Mailey, Hannah Morrell, Olivia Lito, Matthew Slock Power, and Dante Mejia. They will perform at the High School Band and Chorus Festival in January. Mr. Pascal announced that senior Joshua Secura earned the highest possible ACT composite score of 36. On average, less than one-tenth of 1% of students who take the ACT earn a top score. In the high school graduating class of 2017, only 2,760 out of more than 2 million graduates who took the ACT earned a composite score of 36. In a letter to the student recognizing this exceptional achievement, ACT Chief Executive Officer Martin Rorda stated, quote, "Your achievement on the ACT is significant and rare. While test scores are just one of the multiple criteria that most colleges consider when making admission decisions, your exceptional ACT composite score should prove helpful as you pursue your education and career goals." Thank you. Do we have any board committee reports? None? Okay. Board member remarks on non-agenda items. Mike?
I continue to still be amazed by the robust and breadth of the activities our students are involved in through our Twitter feed. The Twitter feed has been explosive lately, and I encourage you to look at it. But the breadth of both academic and sort of what I would call soft academic activities is outstanding, and the fact that our teachers are, you know, Marcy Pesterich, not to mention somebody, but she puts a lot of great stuff out, Mr. Rufo.
That's Rogério. She's out there.
I love the stuff, and I'm still not joining Twitter. But the fact that it's on our district webpage is easily accessible. I can figure it out, and it's really a testament to all the hard work that every individual in our district puts into our kids.
Well, I had the opportunity last Wednesday night, on the 24th, to attend the Mawa High School Open House for eighth graders with my oldest daughter, and, cool. You know, you get there and the marching band is outside playing, and, you know, everybody's just, it's an exciting atmosphere, and you get to meet, obviously, Mr. Pascal Muzboni were there, Mr. Gliata. The programs that they have set up for the kids going through, you know, the whole college admissions program was just great to see. You know, of course, all the supervisors were there, but what was really cool in my mind were all the teachers that were there, the club advisors there to, you know, for the kids to have the opportunity to, you know, see what they're, what they have the potential of getting involved in, between the club advisors for all the clubs and the coaches who were in the gym to, you know, to meet with kids and talk about all the opportunities that they're going to have. Just really thank you to those people for taking, you know, they could have been home with their families, but they were there for that night and just really made it an awesome night, so.
Were there tears in your eyes?
Well, not quite there yet. But I'll tell you what, though. You know, I understand why we do the open house. I mean, obviously, the private schools are doing their open houses, trying to, you know, sort of lure students to, you know, to other high schools, and I got to tell you, you know, I respect everybody's, you know, decision to do what's best for their kids, but man, other than the heavy price tag, I can't imagine what those other schools offer that we don't.
Nothing.
So cool. So. Anybody else? We're good? I'll entertain a motion on 14A minutes from the last meeting. Mr. Gallo and Mr. Wenderkowitz. Roll call, please.
Dr. Morthee.
I think I abstained.
Abstained? Okay.
I don't think I abstained.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Secon.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Abstain.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Ms. Mavertish.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on 15A through M, new business. To, I got Mr. Wenderkowitz and second by Ms. Secon. Roll call, please.
Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Secon.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Ms. Mavertish.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on A through CC. Mr. Wenderkowitz, second by Dr. Morthee. Any questions, comments, concerns? Roll call, please.
Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Secon.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
And Ms. Mavertish.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Public questions or comments. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please state, name and address. Come up, please.
Hi. My name is Tricia Dubois.
Hi, my name is Tom Renicich. I'm the librarian at the Franklin Avenue Middle School in Franklin Lakes, and I'm here representing the Bergen-Pasek Association of School Librarians. I'm here to read a letter from the presidents of the American Library Association and also the American Association of School Librarians. Dear Superintendent Schoen, President Behren, and members of the board, years of research has shown that reading for pleasure improves student academic, I'm sorry, student academic performance, improves attitudes towards reading and learning, and improves self-confidence and empathy. And so, we are dismayed to learn that Mawa Township Public Schools has restricted access to library materials for elementary students. We applaud the district's commitment to standard-based instruction, and we believe that the national school library standards for learners, school librarians, and so, and school libraries are fundamental to that commitment. These forward-looking standards provide students with a framework for examination of diverse perspectives and experiences, collaboration towards individual and common goals, curation of resources for personal and academic growth, reflective practices that nurture exploration and innovation, and capable and ethical use of information technologies. Your professional school librarians integrate those standards across grade levels and content areas while offering equitable access to a broad range of resources that facilitate learning and reflect diverse academic needs, abilities, student backgrounds, and personal interests. Classroom libraries simply cannot offer the depth and breadth of resources that will serve all learners. As presidents of the American Library Association and American Association of School Librarians, we advocate for greater access to books and reading materials because we have seen the impact of that access in research and in practice. National school library standards are grounded in a set of common beliefs, including that reading is the core of personal and academic competency, and intellectual freedom is every learner's right. Limiting access to library materials runs counter to those beliefs and to the guiding principles in American Library Association's Library Bill of Rights. Moreover, it creates a perception that the library is a place that discourages exploration, discourages curiosity, and enthusiasm for reading. We are confident that the professional librarians in Mawa schools can continue to provide this critical foundation while integrating standards-based instruction across grade levels and content areas. We urge you to reverse the rule, limiting checkout opportunities, and restore full access to your school libraries. Sincerely, Lorda Garso Fibo, President of the American Library Association, and Catherine Roots Lewis, President of the American Association of School Librarians. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christina Cucci. I'm here on behalf of the New Jersey Association of School Librarians. You just heard from Tom and our national organization. I'm here on our state organization. Dear Dr. Schoen, as the president of the New Jersey Association of School Librarians, I am writing to urge you to allow students free access to book checkout at their school libraries. As the statewide organization for school library media specialists, one of the guiding principles is that reading is essential for students' personal and academic success. Although students may have access to classroom libraries, school libraries are the centers that provide the best utilization and diversity of resources to match not only the entire school curriculums, but also students' interests. Your district is using the AASL Standards for 21st Century Learners, which states that reading is the core of personal and academic competency. The school library is the singular place in the school that is accessible to all students and supports a culture of reading. School library media specialists are the experts who have the vast knowledge of both fiction and nonfiction, which is essential to meeting the New Jersey Core Content Standard. The school library is the place where students can learn to make connections with reading, which leads to self-directed learning skills. It's an indispensable component of students becoming strong readers. School library media specialists are your staff with a specific certification and expertise to be the specialist in collection development, information, digital, technology, and media literacy. These are your leaders in social and emotional learning as well, and they are instructional partners that provide reading guidance to students and staff. Additionally, school libraries have better data management abilities than classroom libraries do. School libraries are equipped with computerized circulation systems. They can collect information on student checkouts. They can encourage literacy based on that data. We can track the return of materials to ensure that materials are not lost. We control duplication of materials also through the system. School libraries have the ability to track the age of materials as well, keeping things current. The school library is the most cost-effective system for providing library collections to students. School libraries make access to books a priority every day, and JASL urges you to allow the students of Mawa free access to book checkouts in their school libraries. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jen Park, I'm reading a letter from the New Jersey Library Association on behalf of Pat Timaldi, Executive Director. Dear Dr. Schoen, on behalf of the members of the New Jersey Library Association, I must express our deep concerns regarding the new rule in the Mawa School District limiting students' ability to check out books in the school media centers on the elementary level. We believe such a rule is extremely detrimental to the educational experience of the students. An excellent school media center under the administration of a certified school media specialist is critical in providing a quality educational experience for students in every grade level. Unfortunately, when access to checking out books in the school media center is severely limited, students suffer both academically as well as socially. The varied materials in a school media center can open a student's eyes to lifelong learning opportunities. A qualified school media specialist is a critical educational professional who can guide each student in discovering their own interests and abilities. How can this possibly happen when students are granted such limited access to materials in the school media center? What happens to a student who happens to be absent during the day they are assigned to go to the library? We have heard that, yes, they can come to the library at a different point in time. However, this does represent issues for librarians as they do have very limited amounts of time. Must they wait another two or three weeks to check out library materials? This rule seems inconsistent with the district's goal of providing a robust learning environment for all students. One must also wonder if this makes good economic sense for the district. Over the years, funding has been provided to make school media center resources available for all students. Does it now make sense to limit access to these resources? Although there may be classroom collections, which we have heard, these can never be comprehensive enough to meet the varying reading abilities or subject interests of all the students in a particular grade. Media centers allow students to discover and explore a wide range of interests and topics unique to their individual learning styles. To improve reading scores, students should be encouraged to take out more reading materials, not less. School media specialists are trained to guide students to use resources in both the digital and print world. To be a successful 21st century learner, students develop skills for both learning environments. The school media center is a fundamental tool for a strong learning environment in every school. What message does it send to students when they can go to the school media center but are not able to use its resources? It would seem to indicate that reading is not important. Surely, this is not the message you wish to impart to your students. We urge the Board of Education to develop a policy which will permit students to frequently use the school media center and to support school media specialists in the district whose responsibility is to guide students in their choice of materials from the library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tricia Dubois. I'm a mom. I'm a second-grade mom of two boys at Lenape Meadows. I'm also a school psychologist. I've been practicing for 30 years. I struggle with this whole lack of access to the library. Did some research, you know, I understand you're trying to do 21st century skills, but currently, you know, we've got some data on it. Lenape Meadow, the book circulation was 2,742 books at the end of September, from September to October 2017. Currently, we have 2,239 books. That's 503 less books the children have taken out in five weeks. JK, the children, as of October 30th, had taken, had taken out 4,452 books in 2017. As of October 30th, 2018, they have taken out 2,096. That's 2,356 less books in two months of school. I find this absolutely disturbing that the children do not have access to these books. So, I try to keep an open mind, 21st century skills. Every other week, the kids will be learning something different. My two children are in the back, and they're the two kids reading back there, hopefully quietly. So, I ask them, when they come home, week one, Microsoft survey, why is my second grader being asked to fill out a Microsoft survey? I'll tell you why. Because they don't know anything about it, and they shouldn't have to at seven years old. Week two, typing program. They were working on a typing program. I'm not sure why a second grader is being asked to type. They're using tablets at that age. They shouldn't be typing. I find that outrageous. If you ask an OT, they'll tell you they're really not developmentally able to, to finger key these different, you know, when they type. I think I was a freshman in high school when I took it. You know, in 10 years, kids have to learn to read. In 10 years, who knows if there'll be keyboarding? Technology changes all the time. Are we teaching them because we're prepping them for Park? Is Park even going to exist in another year or two? We're not really sure. Why are skilled and qualified librarians teaching our children to type? Can't we hire an aide to do that? It doesn't seem like it's, you know, you need a college degree to teach typing skills. Has anybody been to the library to observe the classes while they're learning keyboarding? Volunteer parents have. It's like herding cats. The kids aren't interested. They're not able. And we have another plan to measure it. If we're basing our success of this program on the circulation at the library, it's already failing miserably. Are you going to survey the students? Are you going to survey the parents? How are you going to measure if this is a successful program? I don't particularly care for my kids being the guinea pigs. I'm assuming you all have children that have gone through elementary level. Well, my kids need to read. They need to read as much as they can, and they're typing in the library. I find that outrageous. My own district, our high school, redid the library. We have 500 books in our high school library. Middle school will be done next year. You know what it looks like? A Starbucks. Why don't we just add latte machines to all of our libraries? Because this is where we're going if we don't keep the fundamental program alive, if we just let them type. I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Morgan Harris. I'm a resident here in Mawa. I'm a Mawa rec soccer coach. I'm also a middle school English teacher in New York State, and most importantly, a mom of two boys who attend school right here in the Mawa School District. I'm here tonight because I care deeply about the literacy lives of my children, and I cannot help but feel that they are being stifled by this new rule that has been set in place in the elementary schools. Simply put, I think it is important to remind you that according to your mission statement, some of the visions for the media center are for students to develop a love of reading and literature, for students to feel welcomed, comfortable, and safe, for students to develop critical thinking skills, creativity and imagination, and for the media center to be a place where inquiry and discovery thrives. It is because of those visions that my boys enjoy going to the school library. It's because of those visions that my boys used to come home with new books every week and with an appetite to devour those books for their next session. However, I've seen that appetite begin to decrease. Since the rule of taking out books every other week has been put into place, that glimmer in their eyes has dimmed, their thirst for new, exciting literature has not been quenched because they're unable to get the literature that their minds are craving every week. Unfortunately, denying our children the right to take books out whenever their heart desires does not encourage active readers nor support the importance of reading of school in our school district. Our children's school library should be respected and valued by you, the Mawa Board Members of Education, as much as it is by my two boys. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing about how you will ensure that literature from our school libraries gets into my boys' hands more often.
Matthew Park, Sixth Divine Drive. I'm a historian as well as an educator. You just heard the numbers. 503 fewer books already at Lenape, over 2,300 fewer books at JK. You project those numbers forward, and at JK, we're looking at, possibly by the end of the year, over 9,400 fewer books. 9,400 fewer books hitting the hands of Mawa's children. The numbers are lower at Lenape, but they still, if these numbers hold, might be over 4,000 fewer books. This policy is disgraceful. It needs to be reversed. My question for the board, did you know these figures? Do you know that the circulation figures are down?
No. Thank you for sharing that.
Okay. If I was on the Board of Ed, I would want to know those figures, and I would be pretty upset if I was sitting here right now, being ambushed with them, and I would ask some hard questions. And members of the board, I hope you start asking those hard questions. Because there is still not a coherent or reasonable explanation for this policy that anyone has been given. We have avoided making assumptions, but we're not being given answers. And so, it looks to us like this is part of a long-term policy of shrinking and eliminating the library. There's no other, there's no other explanation. We, the parents, are absolutely baffled as to why this is happening, and this is what it looks like. When I came here today, my son, of course, knows where we're going, and he told me, Daddy, please go and win today because I want to be able to check out books every single week. The last time I talked about this, he told me how sad and disrespected he felt. I feel sad and disrespected, too. And the parents feel disrespected because we are not getting straight answers. We are not getting reasonable answers that make any sense. There is information that is not being shared. The circulation statistics are being kept quiet, and the impact of this is being kept quiet. We are tired of this. This is the third board meeting now that we've brought this up. We are sick and tired. We want answers. We demand that this policy be reversed. Thank you.
I don't live here, but I was the librarian at JK for 14 years. I taught just under 4,000 students, and in my professional opinion, this new policy is extremely detrimental to students as well as being contrary to the curriculum. I've taught most of your children, many of whom are voracious readers. Mr. Gallo, you may not know this, but when Daniel was at JK, all he read was Goosebumps. Mrs. Gallo asked if we could work on that, so we made a deal. One Goosebumps and one something else. Together, we talked. We explored the library for different titles, and he found other books that excited him. Librarians do this dozens of times a day to put the perfect book in the hands of every reader. I heard at the last two board meetings that this policy is to give more time for lessons. I would argue that, in fact, what goes on during that 10 minutes spent looking for books is as important as anything else they're learning in class. And I know, I taught the class. The curriculum has many references to the importance of reading, but I'm just going to give one quick one. We hope to see all students develop a love of learning and reading for their own personal enjoyment and knowledge. In my years at JK, with a generous budget from this board, we were able to build a vibrant collection of 23,000 books. A professional librarian knows the books and matches kids to books they'll love, helping them to develop their own tastes and expand their horizons as they explore the different sections, and in turn, share the excitement of a new book with their friends. The classroom teachers don't know the books in their bins, and why would they? They didn't select them, and they have plenty to do without that burden. There's, their job is teaching the students to read, which of course is a critical skill. But the librarian's goal is to help them turn them into children who not only can read but love to, want to, and will continue to as lifelong readers. There's no way the classroom libraries, with books purchased mainly by level, can compete with a well-stocked, carefully-selected, balanced collection and readers guided by a trained librarian, and I'm sure the classroom teachers would agree. When the library was closed for Park for about a month, kids would call out to me in the hall, Mrs. Canetti, I need another book. I read everything in my classroom. I read everything in my classroom. I've had many students who exchanged books every day or so. Josh Sequera, thank you for bringing his name up. I sent books to Josh Sequera in 3rd grade when he was still at Betsy because he'd pretty much blown through that entire library. And when he got to JK, he swapped books out every day. He walked in in the morning when I was having my coffee, checked his own book in, and he checked his own books out. And he was not the only student I'd had over the years that did those kinds of things. I'm not taking credit for his test scores, but I'm guaranteeing that his access to unlimited reading materials certainly helped. I've had many students who exchanged books every day or so. Where is the logic in letting students hungry for a great book leave empty-handed or turn them away in between library classes? We should do more to put books in their hands, not less. Data from more than 34 statewide studies suggests that students tend to earn better standardized test scores, Josh, in schools that have strong library programs. Other studies show that strong school libraries are also linked to additional indicators of student success, including graduation rates and mastery of academic standards. In addition, better test scores have been associated with how many times a week students visit their libraries, how flexibly their access to libraries is scheduled, and how much they borrow library materials for use elsewhere. What you're proposing now, 10 minutes every three weeks at JK, amounts to roughly 90 minutes in an entire school year. 90 minutes all year to make connections with kids and books. Impossible. This would not be defined as a strong library program and the children are the ones who will suffer for the reduction in service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mawa Board of Ed. My name is Christopher Liebman. I live here in Mawa. I have four daughters ranging of age of 17 down to nine. I wanted to come here tonight because I heard about the library program or the lack of it. One of the points I wanted to bring up is that all of us here as adults, we're technology immigrants. We grew up in an age where we didn't have technology and we still believe to this day, we have to learn new things technology-wise. Our children are technology natives. They grow up not technology from day one. They don't need to be taught how to type, they don't need to be taught how to surf the net. They do need to be taught a love of reading. My 4th grader, she was bringing home about five books a week last year. Five different books a week. I understand they have books in their classroom, but it doesn't foster the same love of learning. It's just one more thing in their classroom that they need to pay attention to. Whereas when they go into a library, they have just unrestricted access to books. It's all that there is. They see all the books there, they're encouraged to look into them and research them and want to grab them and touch them and open them up, smell them, you know, look at the words, look at the covers, read the backs and the insides. It's different because books in a classroom, a small library section in a classroom, it just becomes one more thing in the midst of everything else they have to do during the day. Again, we don't need to teach our kids how to use technology. They know how to do that. We need to learn how to do it, but they know how to do it. We do need to foster a love of reading in our children. It's been proven, I know you guys have read it yourselves, yourselves as parents, that a love of reading fosters higher grades in mathematics, in science, technology, across the board. And they need to get that love before, you know, learn that love of reading before 12. That's what the, you know, the studies show. Without it, it's harder for them to get it throughout the rest of their lives. Studies also show that kids who are at the most at risk at home have the least amount of books. You know, if they can only go to a library, you know, and use that resource every other week out of a, you know, 40, 42-week school year, maybe they're going 15, 20 times a year. That's just shameful and strong-headed. And I hope you'll take everyone's comments into consideration here as parents and as parents yourselves. We need to do more, we need to do better and foster that love. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Mary Upton, 15, Whispering Pines Drive here in Mawa. Unfortunately, I guess Dr. Dettoro is not here this week, but I did have a conversation with him on the 24th and I thank him for his time. However, I felt the questions that I posed were not addressed. So, these are the two questions that I took verbatim from my email that was sent to him originally. What research had slash has been done by the board and staff to substantiate making the change in curriculum? Two, is there data, and I put in parentheses, statistical information from other schools in New Jersey utilizing this model? Please provide any research slash data you or the board have that substantiates this decision. In our conversation, this is what transpired. One, the answer I was given was that this is in addition to curriculum, not a subtraction. I beg to differ. The second point was, I was told there are no Media Center standards for New Jersey and Mawa is using the country's library and media standards, whatever those are. The third point was, since the program was not being removed, there's no validity to having statistics. Well, as I stated to Dr. Dettoro, standards are only as good as their research or documentation. How are we basing our standards on a national level at what states are involved since New Jersey has none? So we can safely say this is based on 49 states at a maximum. While our children do need to be exposed to various ways of reading and technology, how difficult is it for the last 10 to 15 minutes of a period to be utilized for taking out books? Has any research on brain function and reading via a paper book been analyzed by you, the board? If this is a true addition to the curriculum as stated by Dr. Dettoro, how will it be measured for either success or failure? These are the answers we as parents should be provided. So, since we haven't been provided any information, I've compiled some of my own. It's not based on any true research methods, but I went out to Facebook, which is where I initially heard about this change in quote-unquote curriculum. So I asked on a couple of groups what their circulation policies are for K through 5. And this is strictly Bergen County. I want to make sure that we stay in the county. So in Bergen County, we have 70 municipalities. I received information on 28, including Mawa. 24 have weekly book circulation and four, which is including Mawa, have biweekly. And at least one of the schools, a librarian works in multiple schools, which I believe we have the same situation here in Mawa for Betsy Ross and GW.
Sorry, how many schools?
Four. And that's only out of 20, I got a total of 28. So this information includes respondents from 40% of Bergen County municipalities. 34% have, still this year, 34% of weekly circulation and almost, it was 5.7%, have biweekly circulation. I will continue to gather the data, looking to have all of Bergen County accounted for if I have to go out and call the schools myself. We can all agree to disagree, which is what the end of the conversation with Dr. Dettoro was, but what if this was happening in your school district? What are the next programs to be quote-unquote improved on? Art, music? What else is going to be taken away from our kids? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ann Lepore, 209 Highland Road. I'm a Betsy Ross parent and my son has a learning disability. At the beginning of last year, he flat-out refused to do any reading at all. He didn't want to try because his morale was so low. But, he loves the library. He likes library time at school. He likes touching and selecting a book that is just for him. He loves the fanfare around the process, the dedicated room that hints at the volume of material that's out there waiting for him. And I missed some kind of notice that was sent home. I didn't believe him this year when he said that he wasn't supposed to exchange books on library day. After inquiring about the mysterious 50% decrease in access, I asked him what he thought. He's seven. Who would torture kids like that? It's torture to show us all these books and not let us take them home. I welcome change in many forms, but I'm concerned that this bizarre new policy is about to be set into the five-year plan without rhyme or reason. And I'm not a technophobe. This fall, I completed a grant request for 3D printers at all the elementary schools. I'm on the Technology Advisory Board of Bergen Tech Peterborough. I'm a professor of electronic art and computer animation at Ramapo College. And I have to tell you, you need to understand that the reading comprehension and writing skills of the students coming to us at the state colleges in the last five years is horrible. We've seen like a rapid decline in just five years. Why would a school like ours think that connected and engaged learning means stepping away from the world of books and basic literacy? I heard a rationale that said book choice takes 30 minutes and we need that time for Google Docs and acclimating kids to computer use. But didn't it occur to anyone that before you engage kids in contemporary digital literacy, that they need to understand and love being able to read in this concrete analog world? I didn't think that the same district that cautions us about screen addiction during Mawa Municipal Alliance events would be the same district to prioritize screens over hands-on engaged literacy for our youngest learners. And I never thought that a school district describing itself as high-performing would choose to actively diminish the value and engagement of books. The buy-in created by taking something of your choosing home, the very basics of hands-on learning? Has Northern Highlands chucked choice for children? Is anyone concerned about what will happen to home values when our district is known more for software fads than for literacy? Will Mawa be known as the lazy babysitter of the formerly academic region? Purchasing software packages, putting our little ones in front of screens instead of doing the real work of engagement seems wrong. Libraries are an important part of the innovative open-source movement. If children are not taught to value-sharing, access to information, or that their choices matter, what kind of citizens are we raising? Thank you for listening to all of our comments.
Thank you.
My name's Allison Calucci. I live at 28 Divine Drive. I currently have a 4th grader at JK and I have a 7th grader at The Ridge. I actually am coming for the same reasons that many of you are here and I too am an educator. I actually most often go back to my own district and speak proudly of the things that happened in Mawa. I talk about the things that happened at Lanape when my students were there, whether it was math or science or science explorers or what we were doing in math. But when we really started to look at the love of learning and we started helping teachers learn how to be better at teaching reading and we got in professionals and professional training and learning the levels of kids and how to differentiate, I was doing those same things as an educator myself and I was proud to say, the town that I live in, my children are also benefiting from that. Last year, I was so excited when my 3rd grader came home with a program that the MSF helped to fund, which was One School, One Book. I thought, how awesome is this? We are encouraging, I think it ended up being all three elementary schools, reading The Chocolate Touch. They funded it, every family got a book in their hand. Could I have done it online? Yes. But we found the importance of getting an actual book to every family to learn the love of reading and to sit together and just enjoy that simple pleasure together. I was so proud, went back, my school did it this year. And again, it's one of those things that I'm proud of that Mawa does. We are so fortunate to have these libraries that have these unbelievable amounts of circulation materials for every type of learner, for every type of genre. And it's been so exciting for each of my children to come home each week getting what interests them. I've always appreciated the classroom libraries that have been purchased so that these teachers can have the abundance of resources for their kids. But nothing takes the place of the opportunity to go to a place and not have to get a book that's at your level, get a book because you just love the states and you want to get every single state book you can. Or you are the person that loves to read about young Americans, whatever it happens to be. I'm just disappointed that now my school district, even though I do understand that we have to still realize in this era, our children have to be ready for technology. And I think we've done that all along. We still have to realize that that's important. I just don't want to see it taken at the expense of what the opportunity is for choice. And I think someone mentioned it before, that we have a very diverse community here in Mawa. My children are fortunate. We get books as gifts, we go get books, we donate books in every way. Not every family is as fortunate as we are. We have the public library for access for books as well, but not every family has the time to get to that public library. These are children that every week get an opportunity to take an adventure, whether it's fiction, nonfiction, fantasy, whatever. And I think like the former librarian mentioned, we almost don't realize that is an individual lesson every time a librarian helps a kid match a book to what's their interest. If they're just reading Goosebumps or they only want the thickest Harry Potter book that they can find, that librarian tries as best they can to match the right kid with the right book. When we're now taking that opportunity and making it a smaller opportunity for that choice, it just worries me. Because I want to continue to be proud of the things that Mawa does. I understand to a certain point where you're coming from with this technology component. Kids need to know it. They do. But I do think it's important that all kids have access to the books that we've purchased that are current and that are available for them. So please consider this as another option. I believe in this board and our administration, that you're listening to these people and you really see how important this is. Now granted, we are a big community. There's a small amount of people here, but we're a small voice for those that may not realize. I'll admit, in the beginning, I didn't even realize it. You know, September, you get this book, pay this booster, pay this. Then all of a sudden, people started talking. I said, you're right. Even my child who loves to learn, who has books everywhere, still is missing that opportunity for the next book the next week. So please find a way to help everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so first off, I just want to say thank you for coming out and taking part in our meeting tonight. We appreciate hearing your concerns and, you know, like was pointed out, there are, there's some information that we didn't have that's, it's good for us to be able to consider. Someone did mention that, given what was conveyed tonight, that you hope that the board starts to ask hard questions. And I would respectfully tell you that, you know, it's not something we need to start doing, it's something we've been doing. It's, as we've promised in the last couple of meetings, this is an ongoing process. It's something that we are considering, conversations are ongoing. Unfortunately, Dr. Dettoro was not able to be here tonight to continue the conversation. But that doesn't mean that the conversation has stopped. Unfortunately, I, there's, don't get excited, I don't have any, you know, revelations or anything to share tonight. But conversations are ongoing. That's, you know, we made that commitment, that is happening. I would like to point out, just a fine distinction, I heard a couple times tonight referring to this as a policy. It's not a policy. There hasn't been a change in policy. It's simply a change in how curriculum is delivered. So, again, it's a small distinction, but it's an important one. A policy is a much bigger, much bigger discussion. So, with that, if nobody else has any questions or comments?
Please ask harder.
Thank you. He said, please ask harder. He thinks we're not doing anything, so.
Have you been notified of the measures of assessment that will take place in regards to this new rule?
That's an excellent question for Dr. Dettoro and he's, like I said, he's not here tonight to talk to us about that.
So then my next question is, what is the process by which this rule came to be?
I think Dr. Dettoro's gone through that in the last two or three meetings and I appreciate that not everybody likes the answer that's been given, but it was a thoughtful deliberative process going through deciding how to, unpacking, I think is the word that he used, unpacking the curriculum that needs to be, that needs to be delivered. And that process was not made in a bubble. That was with administrators and Dr. Dettoro and principals, teachers involved, I would imagine, right? So it's not something that, you know, one or two people came up with. It was a collaborative process over the period of a couple of days and deciding that, you know, what is the best way and most appropriate way to deliver this curriculum? And this is, this is what they came up with. So it wasn't a knee-jerk thing. There was actual thought behind it. And again, I recognize that not everybody likes that.
Were parents involved in this decision-making? Because these are my kids.
Probably not.
Also, we have heard that teachers were not consulted on this policy and most glaringly that librarians were not consulted.
We were not consulted. We were not consulted.
I would just like to, Allison Calucci, again, 28 Divine Drive. I'm not 100% of this, so I'm going to ask it as a question. In each school, how, or how many librarians that we currently have are tenured librarians?
I don't have that information.
So, I know there's a new librarian in Lanape. So, I know there's a new librarian in Lanape. There's a new librarian in...
We have two tenured...
High school? Your high school teacher?
Three, three, yes.
So, the GW and Betsy Ross has a shared librarian?
Yes.
Is that librarian a tenured teacher?
No.
Okay. In Joyce Kilmer, I believe it's the first year for that teacher?
Okay. So, if we have questions about particular staff members and staffing, it's just, it's more appropriate, maybe give Dr. Schoen a call or an email.
Okay. Then I'll change my question. I think it's challenging when you're a new, a new staff member to a school, and you want to do the right thing that you're being asked to do. And I think they, I don't know any of them. Honestly, I don't even know what they look like. But I think that it's sometimes challenging when you're new to a school district and you want to do what's best, and you're going to do what you're told to do. So, I would just hope that we can also ask the librarians how it's working for them and how, what their feedback is as well through the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I just add, in case there's a misunderstanding? I retired two years ago, so it hasn't been that long ago. I did technology lessons. I did lots of technology lessons. By the time I left, almost the entire curriculum was technology. I used to joke that during lessons, I was not allowed to use the B-word anymore. But in the last 10 minutes, we were doing the B-word. We were doing books. But we were doing technology. Was it hard to squeeze in? Yeah, it was. But we did it because it was the curriculum. So, it's not like technology just got invented in the technology, in the curriculum of Mawa. We've been doing technology for a long time. I'm going to guess, at least the last three or four years I was there, I wasn't doing the Dewey Decimal System anymore. I wasn't reading aloud, which I used to do in my earlier years, to make room for the technology. So, we managed to do both. A professional librarian should be able to do both.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to close. To adjourn, sorry. Nobody?
Who's going to ask a question?
Mr. Gallo?
Who's going to make a statement?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I've been a live school librarian for 39 years. I retired in 2004. Everything you've said tonight, I agree with, and I'm one of nine. I would ask that the administration revisit this and see what they can do. And I'm not pandering for applause or anything, but your points were well-taken and should be revisited. No applause, nothing.
All right. Today, I retired from Rancho Ridge two years ago. I have taught reading and language arts for 28 years. The last 10 years or so, I was a reading teacher in a middle school. I totally, completely agree with everything that's been said. I don't think anything should trump reading. So, I, for one, would like to carry on further conversation with the members of the board and with Dr. Dettoro about this.
Move to adjourn. Mr. Winjerkowitz, seconded by Mr. Gallo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know I said that. We're going to move this way. We're going to find a new administration.
You want to re-approach the [inaudible].
I do.